Board of Trustees meeting to order. Please drive for the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please, Sherri.
Sparks?
Here.
Sagami?
Here.
Emmeline?
Here.
Ziegler?
Here.
Maloney?
Here.
John, absent and excused, he emailed earlier. Feeny?
Here.
Okay, public comments. I know we have one, Mr. Sutton, you can, we can take that up when we get to a specific agenda item. Is there anyone else that has any public comments they'd like to make? Looks like staff, so hearing none. We have no presentations. Approval minutes from the previous board meeting, October 7th, 2019.
Move to approve.
Motion by Sagami.
Second.
Second by Feeny. On the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Written correspondence, anything, Sherri?
I have nothing.
Okay. Reports from boards, committees, and commissioners looking for acknowledgment.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Barb.
Second.
Second by Mark. On the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Minutes are acknowledged. Reports from departments, number 18. Administrator Keith.
I guess as an update to some information in my report on the Camp Phillips Center, I did talk with Attorney Sweeney on Friday afternoon. He was going to be following up with the DNR as legal counsel in terms of the commitment letter that FDG for Development Group has been asking to be prepared for satisfying the DNR up until the public hearing when the possible tenants or the tenants of the occupants of the property in the Camp Phillips Center development would be known or divulged, I should say. So, it's kind of still the ongoing struggle. We did talk with Ellers last week and it's, we're in this, still in this situation, we have to get an answer on the permit and it's really not much of an update of a report. I guess it's the same story, unfortunately. I guess on another note here, the facilities lease agreement that we talked about last time and approved for the town of Weston at the Public Safety Building was taken up by the town board at their meeting last Tuesday. They voted to table it because they had some questions on follow-up. They wanted to include some IT support services in the lease in addition to what was already indicated in there. I don't think that's something we should add. It's not on the agenda, we'll have to take it up at another, at the next meeting or next regular meeting. But just kind of a point of information that there were some things in there that the town would like to have us relook at, whether we are willing to do that or not. I don't think the IT services is anything we can even include in our rent payment and they could actually get, they could actually outsource that somewhere else as well.
Are you looking for physical or are you looking for? Well, I don't understand.
Well, I think that whatever they pay for rent, we should include that cost in that rent and we have no idea how to estimate what that would be. I know Nate looked at it with the clerk in terms of what they wanted, so. Still have to get together with Milt to talk about that. The other thing that they asked to have us do is to resume snow plowing in the Home Sweet Home addition because City of Wausau had taken that over a number of years ago, since for us that's a trip across some area that we don't plow to reach there. So, the City of Wausau elected or agreed to take it over, but they are having some issues with staffing, I guess, right now and they're not able to do that. I don't know, Michael, you had some discussion, I think, with Milt, but maybe not to the extent yet. He wanted, he did want to talk about that.
Yeah, it was just the City of Wausau notified the town that there were certain streets that they were no longer going to be able to plow this winter and was requesting that we plow them again. It's probably been five or six years since we plowed them. Mainly, as Keith referred to, we have to drive through parts of the City of Wausau to get to that part of the town of Weston.
So, again, more for information. I think based on our discussion before, we would be favoring doing that, I suppose. We probably are in a situation where if Wausau's not going to be plowing them, we'd need to do it because I guess we're approaching or getting into the snow season here before we, and I guess we don't necessarily have an official agreement with them, it was more of a gentleman's agreement, handshake agreement. And then just for your information, I will be absent next Monday and Tuesday, planning to be out of the area for an annual hunting trip. So, we were having a special meeting next weekend, I will not be in attendance, at least in person, I can certainly patch in by phone, I think, as long as I have reception where I am. It's been getting missed at times, but I think, I think I'll have reception. So, that's all I had to add.
I think you should have your IT service separate from the lease because lease can have, what you talk about is snow plowing and that sort of things, but if they're going to use this stuff for other purposes, I think there should be a separate agreement because those hours are unknown and special with IT. I mean, it's nothing, you know, you use it on the set hours or whatever, snow plowing, you can do that, but not for the IT service.
Right, yeah, it's, we agree, we thought that was just something that could just be done on an hourly basis or they could even outsource it somewhere else.
Outsource it, I mean, that's not something we have to do.
Well, it's, since this is, since this is just reports, look, Keith, do some research, we can put it on the agenda and have a discussion on it next time. So, any questions for Keith at all? Keith, the only question I have, the permit stuff, whereas, you know, I know they had to redo them to re-admit, is that just in a waiting queue now?
Right, the main item being that satisfying that letter, that commitment letter.
Yeah, since kind of chicken and egg thing because which comes first. So, realizing that's, they're not going to give us an answer until the permits are finally done then? Or, I mean, do they need the developer's agreement in hand, a copy of it, before they can issue permits? I guess I'm...
They want, they want a, what satisfies their definition of a commitment to purchase the land between the developer and the retailer.
So, they're saying without that, they're not going to agree to agree?
Without that, they're saying they can't approve a permit.
They can't approve, okay.
They have done this in the past, they approved the site, it never happened, project never happened. They don't want to repeat that, they don't want to do it. And I can see their point, really.
Yeah. So, I guess the issue for the board, and maybe we can talk about it on our next board meeting, is for, we can't get the financial projections from Ellers without this permit disclosing a developer's agreement for them to do financials for us to make a decision on whether this thing ends or it proceeds forward.
Right, it's all speculative, but I guess the other part of it would be that regardless of whether they have this phased project, whether they had the previous one, there was going to be a fairly large ask from the village, probably about the same magnitude either way. So, it was a, it probably comes down to whether or not there's a desire to speculate to some degree that this would be a catalyst kind of a project to spur other development. So, those are things we'll have to keep in mind as we go forward, but I know we need to get an answer on the permit. I know FDG has talked about the investment that they've made and land options and so forth so far and, of course, the land price is really something that's affecting this whole thing, too.
So, I mean, to, so what has to happen is the land purchase. That has to happen, then they'll agree. What, what, how, how, how can we be assured that they will agree if that happens? Or that's what they're saying, we're not, right?
When you're saying, they, you're saying, you're talking, FDG's agreements with the landowners.
Right. And when you said Weston will have an ask, you mean FDG will have an ask?
FDG will have an ask of the village, yes.
Of the village.
Correct.
Well, keep us informed and probably should put it on for at least discussion at upcoming board meetings. Because we're going to make a decision one way or the other, if we can't get Ellers to give us some firm projections, then I don't like speculating. So, we'll talk about this, we'll get it on the agenda the next board meeting and have a little more discussion, but, you know, decisions are going to have to come soon, whether one way or the other. All right, Clerks, Sherri, you have anything you had to report?
Yes, I do. After I completed my report, they came out with the dates for the special election for the Congressional District 7 and they're, they are going to hold that now, or we are, I should say, on May 12th. And if there is a primary, that will be held in conjunction with our spring primary, which is February 18th.
Good job on that.
And they're also...
The letters and stuff, right? I mean, because that was some pretty wild dates that they gave us.
Yes, we have to thank all the area administrators.
Yep, that's great.
They worked hard on that, so that was, that was great. And then also, my understanding is the state is also looking to see if they can provide us some extra funding for these special elections, so we'll see what happens with that. That's all I know at this point.
Why would they not just tie it into regular April elections?
They can't, there's some, some federal, some federal dates with sending out the absentee ballots and such for military and overseas and there, there's just certain deadlines that have to be met and they're federal, they're federal related, so.
At least you got one on a regular.
Yeah, we got one on, so, yeah.
Is the May 12th on Monday? Hopefully not?
No.
Okay.
Actually, you know what?
Well, the other one was a Monday and you would have had it set up on Sunday.
You know what, I never looked at it.
So, what is May 12th? I'm just wondering.
May 12th.
May 12th is a Tuesday. Good, thank God.
I think there was something about that also.
Yes. Because that was the problem last time.
You would have had it set up on Sunday, which, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, any questions for Sherri? Not finance, Jess, you talked out.
Good job.
Okay, we'll move on to Larry Metz, Matt. Reports in there and I'm happy to answer any questions regarding any... Okay, any questions for Matt? All right, Parks and Rec, Sean.
I did have a report in the package this time, but if you have any questions.
Okay, Plan Development, Jen.
I have my report and then Valerie did put a refuse and recycling update, so if you have questions on either of those, I can answer them.
Questions for Jen? Police, Clay.
I provided a statistical report, I just have a couple of staffing and department updates. Chris Benning was promoted to sergeant from detective and that was effective in September. Leah Long went from school resource officer to detective and that was effective a couple weeks ago. Cody Swearingen went from special investigative unit assignment to school resource officer, which will leave a vacancy in SIU, which the drug investigators position until the council is fully staffed. We had a police commission meeting for our hiring process, meeting in April 4, we offered a position to one candidate who is in the background phase right now, we hope to get that completed in the next week or so. Of the four, we have a number two candidate that we hope sticks around until we have a vacancy. And joint finance meeting is scheduled for this Thursday to hopefully approve our budget.
Okay, and questions for Clay? Of course, Michael.
I guess the main thing is we're in the, I guess, beginning stages of the fall leaf brush pickup and I think John moved to me earlier today was that, I think residents are a little shocked that we're ahead of schedule, so it's been probably a first in a long time, so.
But isn't the schedule later this year than it was last year?
We always start the second full week in October, so, yeah, I don't know, but...
There's still a lot of leaves up.
Yeah, it might just be the leaves haven't fallen yet.
Because I only did one picking on ours and I'm looking and going, okay, when are we coming out?
Well, our area definitely wants to be last, they want to be in L forever.
Yeah.
So, I don't know how we get that, but that's fantastic, so.
We can start rotating differently.
We don't think so. But thank you. Any questions for Michael? Technology, Nate, you have anything?
Nope, I have my report in the last meeting's packet, so I'll keep any questions.
Okay, item number 27, work product transmittals, $10,000, September 2019, building permits.
Move to approve.
Motion by Maloney.
Second.
Second by Feeny. On the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Point of order, Mr. President, did we skip 23A and 24 with Parker and Schultz?
What? No, Valerie, she covered Valerie's report.
Okay, my apologies, I saw Schultz on 24 and...
For police?
Yeah.
Okay.
Then, my mistake, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. All right, consent agenda, is there anything anyone would like to pull out for discussion? If not, let's take 29 and 30, which are approvals, 31 and 32 are acknowledgements. So, vouchers on, approved vouchers, 51 to 45 to 51 to 77. Move to approve 29 and 30. Motion to approve by Maloney.
Second.
Second by Sagami. On the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. And then acknowledgements for items 31 and 32.
Motion to acknowledge.
Motion, Emmeline.
Second.
Second by Maloney. On the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Item number 35, ordinance number 19-018, an ordinance to approve the rezoning of two acres of land from a single-family residential, large lot to multifamily residential located northwest of the intersection of Hunt Street and Callan Avenue, Village of Weston, Marathon County, Wisconsin, project number 20191342. So moves. Motion by Feeny. Second by Maloney. On the question.
I just had one, I was reading some, where in there that they're looking at possibly putting a single-family home there?
It's already there.
There is one there.
I know there's always one there, so they're...
They're not doing anything with the homes, so it's just a zoning change. You can have single-family homes and multifamily.
I think what it said was that they may just continue to rent it out?
Yeah, they have no plan.
Yeah.
It's not part of the other...
But that's not part of the, that's not part of the ordinance.
Okay, because I thought if they were going to redo, if they would put the single, buy the other single-family homes?
No, the home exists.
Yep. Okay, anything else on the question? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried. Four to one. Item number 36, ordinance number 19-019, an ordinance to approve the rezoning of 342 acres of land from a single-family residential, large lot to single-family residential, small lot, located southeast of the intersection of Bond Cattle Street and East Jolink Avenue, goes west from Marathon County. So moved. Motion by Feeny.
Second.
Second by Maloney. On the question. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number 37, resolution number 2019-022, designating the public depository of the Village of Weston.
Motion to approve.
Motion, Emmeline.
Second.
Second by Maloney. On the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number 38, resolution number 2019-026, memorandum of agreement with Marathon County, City of Wausau, Villages of Proton, Winter, Rothschild, and Weston, and Town of Ribmont for storm water permit program requirements.
Move to approve.
Motion by Sagami.
Second.
Second by Maloney. On the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Number 40, unfinished business, 2020 budget.
That was just a, please, please, if anyone can do additional, we didn't get through because I know we all know. If there's nothing, then we just have to talk.
Did we miss 39?
Yeah, did we miss 39? I forgot.
Oh, I apologize. We're purposely doing that for you, so. We want to see what kind of reaction we get out of you. I was, we were quietly watching you, so. Okay, 39, resolution number 2019-027, resolution approving the sale of Lot 1 of Certified Survey Map 17913, volume 87, page 28, a 0.471 acre lot in the Weston Physic and Technology Park to Andrew E. Sutton. Do we want, is this appropriate that would be the timeframe to talk? Mr. Sutton, would you like to add something?
Mr. Sutton, 6504, since we're... I think we've pretty much had a deal hammered out here, but then late last week I got the draft, which is in your package. And I don't agree with the item six, which seeks to impose your costs on me for the sale of the land, which includes legal fees. It's really bad, it could even include your staff time to me. I've never seen such a clause in a contract, you know, typically every party pays their own fees. In fact, I brought copies for anybody that wants one, when this deal was proposed to Mr. Warden a couple of years ago and that, item seven here says, "Cost, each of the parties shall bear their own costs in negotiation and preparation of this agreement." That's more typical. If we could strike six or change it to this language, I'd be happy, but I can't take it unknown here and then assume your attorney fees and more staff time, too, like I said, the way it reads, I could get ding for that as well, so. Otherwise, the rest of the costs, I'm okay with and ready to move forward on this.
How much are those costs?
I've been told maybe up to 500, but that's not including staff time, too, so.
Is this, is this normal language or is this, what was the deal?
I took and sent the last one from, that we had for Warden to Attorney Edie and asked him to update it and this is what I got back, so I don't know if this is the standard language now.
And you, you have a copy of Warden's? We have a copy in the package. Yeah.
I'm sure you do, yeah.
So, I think the premise was that the buyer being more motivated than the seller, then the buyer takes on the cost, that was kind of the premise and we talked about that on the phone on Friday.
Yeah, well, yeah, a little bit.
Or Thursday, so, and that's, that's the question for the board, I guess we're, it's, it's up to the board, I guess, how we want to handle it.
Well, I guess my concern would be that we're taking each one individually and separating all sales. So, I think, I think more importantly, they should be consistent regardless of who's more energetic on it. I'm not talking about this one right here, I'm talking about all of them. So, then it's very clean, very clear, and that's how we go into any kind of an agreement. So, if, I mean, would we, would we take care of, let's say we were trying to dump it and the buyer did not want it, but somehow we got this person to buy it, would, would we then take all the costs on us to help motivate that buyer? I mean, that's kind of what we're talking about. So, I think, in my mind, it sounds better to be all parties pay their own fees. I don't know what's, what Edie's thoughts were on this, so.
I think he was just indicating what, you know, his, essentially what his recommendation would be and I guess I'm neutral on it one way, either way, it's up.
Mr. Sutton, can I ask you a question? Did you have, you had your own attorney review this?
No. No, this, this is such a small money deal, I mean, I don't want to get sunk in attorney fees on this, it's going to cost, it's going to cost too much. I know that you guys did, you know, the rest of it, it shakes out, you know, not...
So, so in the business part, you're saying in the past it was each paid, but now this one comes back with the buyer pays all?
I'm, without looking, I'm not sure what they say. I'm guessing each one was done differently. I can't say that I've done one.
Yeah, I think it's been situational, I don't, you know, in this case, I don't, I would think that we can strike the attorney fees out of it, the rest of the stuff is still included, that's in the agreement, correct?
Do we, do we know what, what the bill is for Edie, just for this?
He said it would be under $500. That's all he said when I asked.
I mean, normally if you're using one attorney, generally you would want to just split the cost between buyer and seller. Would that be? That would make sense. Would that be amenable?
Well, no, because Mr. Edie doesn't represent me, represents you, you know, so he has, he has no, he has no duty to represent me at all.
No, I get that, but he, obviously, an attorney has to draft something to make sure the Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted, that's why I asked if you had an attorney to review it, then in that case it would make sense for you to pay for your attorney and we pay for ours and done deal.
Well, I mean, typically now, like, when I bought this, this building, the adjacent building for Andy Ward, the title company drafts up, you know, which I'm paying, you know, you see, you'll see a list of fees on it, they add $180 bucks, I'm willing to eat those, no argument there, and that would include the title work here. This is stuff that the village opted to do, I mean, really, at the end of the day, somebody on your staff could have just changed the names and the dates on the board and made the work and not paid anything for attorney fees on this.
Well...
I try to be workable, but I, I...
Yeah, I mean, that sounds, that sounds good, but we run things through the attorney and because we, it's, it's not our money, we represent the entire community of the village and it's, it's just smart to run it through the attorney. I actually think that'd be fair if it's 500 bucks and, you know, if we were trying to save the $500 and you had your attorney, I guess I'd expect to split that bill with you because we got to save an attorney's bill. So, if it's 500 bucks...
I guess I could never in my life if I split attorney fees with anybody, because I mean, you're, you're all trying to work with the guys here, but I mean, technically, man, there's parties on this.
I have several times in my personal life and it just made sense. But, can we put a cap of $500 and say that if anything over $500, we'll take the difference of 250 or more? But I guess to save you the attorney fees, it does make sense.
Well, I was specifically saying attorney fees, I mean, like, you guys could hit me with your staff time on it.
Well, no, that's in negotiation and preparation of this agreement, that's it, that's what six says. So, I'm assuming that we can change that language to attorney drawing up this fee, you know, which is the $500 or maybe a little bit more, but not to exceed 250 bucks. I think that's fair. Did you want to put that in the form of the motion? Yes, I would. I'll second that, but, okay. Then for discussion. Restate the motion first, so it's clear. Well, all of this and then number six, wait a minute, here is this.
Where is that from?
Oh, here. Oh, so we have some of this already out there. Okay. Buyer would pay all attorney fees of the... Well, let's see which one we would take here, too.
Doesn't he play, pay closing costs or do we pay closing costs?
But closing costs is different than, number six actually specifically talked about this agreement, drawing up this agreement, correct?
Right.
That's what we're talking about, number six. So, where is number six here? There, number one? Yeah. I would say leaving number six in there, but that Mr. Sutton would help with $250. That would be my, my motion.
Or motion three says your counter offering.
Well, his counter is no, no fees, straight.
Number three says your, your counter offering, did you?
Okay, let me, let me kind of restate what I believe is the motion and you tell me if this is correct. That you move to accept the recommendation of CDA with a counter offer price of $6,500 and approve the adoption of resolution number 2019-027, contingent on item number six being changed to the fee being split equally, the attorney's fees being split equally between, between the purchaser and the buyer, between the seller and the buyer, not to exceed $250 for the buyer.
Let me offer something alternative, I think that's clearer. How about, we'll go 6,750 on the price, but the paragraph's got to go, because again, it's open-ended, it could be handled for, after we sign, like I said, staff time and what have you.
But you're doing, you're doing those other $800 in fees that you had mentioned?
Right, yeah.
Right, because those are yours, okay. Is that cleaner? So, I would go...
Like, say... Like, say.
I'd go to number three, and I would, I would recommend.
Strike number six.
I, I.
That's what I said.
Yeah, go to three. I, I move to recommend the board of trustees counter Mr. Sutton's offer to purchase this with a price of sixty seven fifty, six thousand seven hundred fifty dollars.
And striking.
And striking paragraph six.
Second? Okay, so we've changed, ended the motion, and we have a second. All right, on the question.
Just a clarification.
Yep.
My understanding, we've never charged staff time on negotiating land.
And I'm assuming we don't either, so that's fine.
Just so, just so it's known.
Yep.
Yeah, but if you're, you know, wanting to do something, and he's worried about kidding with staff time, which we, I don't think we've ever.
No.
Charged anybody staff time in their purchasing property, but.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Anything else on the question?
Now, is he, now, is he paying closing costs?
He's paying his fees.
Yes.
Eight hundred dollars.
The rest is on.
Whatever it is on his side, yep.
Anything else? On the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Now it's up to you.
All right.
Okay. All right.
Thanks.
Okay, now, getting on to item number forty, unfinished business, twenty twenty budget. Everyone probably except Nate was here for the budget presentation. So, does anybody have any questions or anything else? There's really nothing to take, uh, take action on right now. Does everybody, any other questions for Jess?
Nope.
Okay, moving on, on the business item number forty one, purchase of property inspector vehicle.
No. No, I'm sorry. Move to approve?
Second.
Motion by Maloney, second by Zagami. On the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
We got thirty three thousand two, three hundred twenty nine.
Yes.
Item number forty two, consider step increase and grade change on the classification compensation matrix for the following employees, Jessica Falkowski, Maria Romanowski, and Sarah Flori.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion by Maloney, second by Zagami. On the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Could have just pulled in Jess.
Item number forty three, twenty twenty employee compensation, CPI adjustments for employee wages in twenty twenty, and a contingency for merit increases.
Move to approve?
Motion by Feeny.
Second.
Second by Ernman. On the question.
On the question, um, this lays out the, the budget money for this, but it's not an automatic, correct?
Well, this is all I keep going.
Well, okay, I guess this is kind of harkening back to how we were, we handled compensation in twenty nineteen. So, the, um, the philosophy that was communicated through, um, HR or personnel was that we would plan for a CPI increase for all employees, and, um, I guess we, we gave some, we made some adjustments for people that, after we did the wage and comp, the comprehensive review of, of our, our class and comp matrix. So for twenty twenty, having done that in, for the twenty nineteen budget season, um, there are fewer of those, but I think there still are some areas where people, I think, have performed that are worthy of being recognized through some merit compensation, and, um, I guess, right now, the way the budget's been presented, that those things have been included, so, uh, we didn't really discuss this, I know it was laid out in the memo, I think, that was behind the, um, the recommendation for HR. So, I guess if that, you know, if that, if that makes sense, I guess that's what, that's what we're just asking for the, uh, for the action on here tonight.
Well, I can handle the, the budgeting the money for this. What, what I, where I am struggling with is someone that's not performing, or someone that's, that's, um, that doesn't deserve it. And, and, and we haven't done, uh, we're not, we're maybe in a step process, or, or, you know, maybe in six months, they're, they won't be here, I don't know. But what I don't want to do is guarantee raises without performance linked to it. And so if this is just to set aside the money, and then we decide to go through the process of, you know, who's earned it, who's ever, but just a flat-out CI, you know, CPI adjustment, I struggle with that, I just do. So that's my concern. So if it's something that we're gonna go through every employee and look at, and decide if they've earned that, or if, if it's gonna happen, that's fine. But if it's just something where we're just gonna raise everybody, and then decide, uh, okay, the average and above get actually more, then I'm gonna struggle. That's just me personally.
Okay, so I think then, if...
Go ahead. I can see budgeting the money.
Right.
I can see that, but if, if it's not warranted, it shouldn't be spent individually.
So I think we need some clarification in our, in our compensation policy with respect to that, because I know that what you're explaining, or what you're, um, describing, I guess, is somewhat similar to what other, some other communities are doing, and not everybody does it, does it the same, but, uh, I think Robin Hig, who now has resigned, or wasn't, had, was, uh, kind of forced to resign from HR committee, had talked about CPI being the pool, told, the total pool, and then, um, however, however, adjustments were made came out of that pool, or if it was something maybe even a little more than CPI overall. I, I guess those are things that have not necessarily then been clarified.
That, that's exactly, that's exactly how we do it at our company. So we decide, uh, overall, three, four, two, whatever it is. And, and then, in, in that category, then, there's possibly zeros, one and a half, or three, or in some cases, it could be a four, or five, or six, or ten, you know, and, and then, but that, the pool money is where it is. So I, I'm not advocating that a one point eight or two, whatever this is, the CFP adjustment, is all the money. I, I don't think that'd be enough if we have some outstanding people that need to jump some grades. So I, I wouldn't want to, I also wouldn't want to limit ourselves with that too, if that's, if that's what we're doing by doing this.
Well, right now, there's, for a CPI based on all employees, it's forty four plus another twenty five.
Right.
For merit. So if you're gonna do it to one pool, I mean, you could look at that overall, I, I think for employees that are, are performing at a satisfactory level, I think it's important that they have at least a cost of living style index, and I agree with that. Um, but do some deserve it more than others? Do you pull it in one pool, and then base it on performance, or, you know, I, I think minimum satisfactory, you know, to get that CPI, you have to be performing at a satisfactory level.
Average or more.
But being able to recognize exceptional employees, that's important.
I, I don't mind, actually, I don't mind approving any kind of number, as, as long as it isn't a guaranteed payout.
But isn't that the, if, you know, like you said, satisfactory, they get the CPI, and if they're exceeding that, that's where the merit comes in, isn't it?
Possibly.
Yeah, well, what Mark's saying is, what Mark's saying is, your pool money and CPI, if you've got someone that's not performing.
Right.
At a satisfactory, or needs improvement, you know, um, then they don't get that full CPI, and then maybe that's some additional money for somebody else, for merit increases for, for stellar performance, or.
It, it may not have to be spent at all, if, if you're not able to spend it all, so.
Well, right, but I'm just saying, there is the CPI plus merit, and to me, CPI is satisfactory or, or above, and merit is if they're exceeding, I mean, if they're exceptional in their job, not just that they're doing their job well, because that's what you expect people to do, but if they're exceeding that, that's where the merit comes in.
I know, but I think the discussion comes in if you have a perfor, if you have an employee that is not performing, up to expectations that he doesn't get that CPI, that's he or she.
Right, yeah, I believe that's gotta be satisfactory or above.
All, all I'm saying is, if it isn't guaranteed, I'm fine with it. That's all I'm saying.
It was not intended to be a guarantee for the, for the merit component of it? I guess my, you know, again, somebody's performing satisfactorily, we thought, you know, the C, based on other discussion from previous year, the CPI was.
Just, just, just change your wording right there, so if somebody is not average, and they're below average, are they guaranteed a CPI? I would say no, and they need to get into a step program to, to be able to earn that back. I'm not saying forever, I'm just saying, you've got to be average or above to get a raise.
Sure.
If you're, if you're below average, what are we doing here then? You know, we need to have everybody average or above.
Right.
That, that's my opinion, so.
The only.
That's a motivator.
Right.
And I, I'm not saying money is always a motivator, it, it's not, but sometimes, it can be complacent, if I know that all I have to do is, uh, kind of show up and do my stuff, and I, I'll get a CPI, and I'm, I'm fine with that. So, if it ain't guaranteed, I'm voting for it. If it's guaranteed, I, I won't be.
It can be guaranteed, Mr. Maloney, you're right. It can be, and, and they have a performance evaluation, based on that performance evaluation, we're gonna make a decision, so it's not just, let's do it and, and increase cost to board. You do an evaluation, right? And Michael does, everybody does evaluation, they're a department.
Department directors do their employees.
So based on that evaluation, then we can make a decision.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, did we want, did you want to clarify?
Nope, I don't need anything, I, I didn't make either one of those, so, I, I just, I think I've heard enough that I can vote on this. Okay?
What's the motion? What's the motion?
The motion is to approve, just the way it says.
So, did you wanna?
Nope, I'm good. Uh, let's call the, um, what was the point of order?
All right. Call the question.
Call the question.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. And I guess, Nate, you can probably address, uh, other concerns in, in your HR committee.
Absolutely.
All right, item number forty four, return to work policy for workplace and non-workplace injuries and illnesses.
Sure. Keith or Sherri, did you want us to speak on this?
So, the current form of the employee handbook, um, did not include a policy for return to work, um, when, uh, when employees are injured, whether at work due to a, due to a workplace injury, or off the job, I guess the discussion at HR, and I think particularly from, um, committee member Fred Schuster, who has a, well, his career has been in risk management, uh, insurance business, um, had, had the comment that, uh, it's, it's always good to have a, a policy like this, so that when people have ability to come back at a limited capacity, that we're able to work them, we're bringing them back into the workplace, um, under restrictions, um, it's particularly more important, obviously, if, if it's a workman's comp claim, but, uh, it's not a guarantee, I mean, if, if we don't have work that they, that they're able to do, in their limited capacity, it's not something that, that is guaranteed to anyone, but, um, you know, there are duties that can be accomplished, and they can be productive on, on things that aren't sometimes getting done, you know, just because we're, we have limited time, so, um, that's the basis for having this, is just to have a policy in place and guidelines to follow, so that we, um, department directors, the village, myself, I guess, can, uh, can try to help bring people back into the fold, and, you know, I think the philosophy being if people are off work too long, and they're not, maybe not gonna be motivated to come back perhaps, so.
I agree.
Anyway.
I, um, I, on the workplace injury, and especially, specifically workers' comp, I agree, wholeheartedly, I mean, whether you're separating paperclips, it doesn't matter, you'd need to get them back in. But on a non-workplace injury, there is a risk of shifting the liability and, and possible re-injury, that now it becomes workplace injury. So I, I just, whoever deals with this, you have to realize that if you're gonna bring them back on a non-workplace, you could possibly shift that liability to the village. And, and that is one that's, there's not a lot of companies that bring back until they're, they have a complete release. And I, and, and sometimes it's not good that they're home that much, but it's, it, the non-related can shift to the village. Just, I'm, I'm just throwing a, a caution out there.
I, I agree, there's.
I apologize for not coming to this meeting, because I think, I think this committee does great work, but, um, just be careful on that.
Yeah, I agree, you know, work-related, workman's comp, they want you to get them back as soon as they can, and there's also a financial issue in there, and, you know, trying to keep your workman's comp, um, your mod factor at a relatively low rate, because that impacts the budget. But the off-duty stuff, if, if we, if it can perform meaningful work, I mean, if we, and that was similar to, I know how the police department ran it, is if they're off-duty, you know, if they're police officer, they're not gonna come in and do clerical work, that's, you know, we have people for that, you cannot manufacture work. So, in, in my mind, if we're gonna do that, it has to be meaningful work at basically their pay grade, what they're normally doing. We're not gonna have them come in here and sort paperclips just so they can collect a paycheck, you know, unfortunately, that's, that's why they have policies, you can buy Aflac, you can buy these sorts of policies, you know, if you're injured on the job, that's what that's for. But I, I don't agree with trying to just create work for someone that doesn't have work, you know what I mean? And then the other, you know, point is really following up, and making sure that those limitations and restrictions that the doctors put in place are closely monitored, otherwise they get injured and the liability does switch back, so. But I agree, there needs to be a policy on it, I would just be very cautious about, uh, off-duty, uh, illnesses and injuries.
Okay.
Because you don't want them working, getting paid their wage and working on a, a much lesser wage job, or whatever, they've gotta be able to function in their pay scale. Not if it's a worker's comp, that you can.
That's totally different.
That's a whole different place, but, uh, off-premise injury or illness is kind of...
I think so? Okay. Did we, Sherri, I apologize, got lost in conversation, did we have a motion on that?
No.
I didn't think so, okay.
Move to approve.
All right. Motion, motion by Maloney, second by Feeny. Anything else on the question? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number forty five, approval of November twenty nineteen medical renewal, increase of one point zero eight percent from group health cooperative.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Ernman, second by Maloney. On the question.
Yeah, can we just keep replicating this one point zero eight percent? Well, I'd like to prove that for the next nine years, oh my heavens.
All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item forty six, contract with Short Elliott Hendrickson for expert witness or other professional services for SBA Tower case. Keith, you wanna talk about that one?
So this is related to the steel monopole that's now, um, located over by the water treatment facility. I think it's been close to a year ago, we talked about the, uh, claim we made against, uh, SBA Towers that they're violation, they're in violation of our lease terms, and that we should be entitled to more rent, just as a matter of common sense with that lease, because they're making, um, much more money than what, uh, we are receiving any compensation for. And, uh, this, uh, the person that, uh, that Short Elliott Hendrickson would have devoted this is regarded as an expert in this field, and, um, would provide expert testimony and some background research on this. Matt indicated last week that there was gonna be a scheduling hearing this week, we did have a, uh, staff had to respond to a bunch of questions from, um, SBA Towers attorney, uh, that were actually addressed to our, to, to the other firm that's representing our insurance claim on this, uh, the insurance part being that SBA Towers is claiming that we, but we denied them, uh, continued expansion of the use of the site based on zoning requirements, which is not the case, it has to do with violation of the lease, so, um, I guess we are, we are feeling optimistic that the, uh, that we have a good claim, that we have a good case, that we should be receiving more rent, just based on pass, on, uh, current practice in the, in the field. So, this... So this just is essentially a retainer for Mr. Ramsos or Short Elliott Hendrickson to, to assist in this lawsuit.
Keith, my only question, and it says the total cost not to exceed ten thousand. He's got a. Pretty lengthy list of all the different people that could possibly be involved in this, but one thing on his contract says, when possible. Uh, they will provide a fee estimate at the time services are requested. It seems like every time we get lawyers involved, it comes back for contract extension, contract extensions, more and more and more, so. Do we have, I mean, we're saying ten thousand, then he has to come back. You know, this always, this always bothers me because it's like the well, just keep going back to the well and keep asking for more. What is our, you know, what are we looking at on the plus side if we're successful as far as our fees that we're gonna be able to bring in or, or. For people that they've added on the tower? Are we able to do some sort of cost benefit analysis based on putting this litigation in there?
Well, that's one of the things that SBA Towers was not, was, was not cooperating with our attorney on initially, that they were not. Providing the information in terms of how much rent they're getting.
And could, could, can we ever know that we're getting the actual? I mean, is that, is that something that Matt was able to uncover? I mean, what are we currently getting right now, monthly? Do we know?
What was the total we were getting? The only lease we have is that one, I think. We're not, we're not getting any lease money from the Altavertie site, are we?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, you went.
Yeah, the Altavertie site was at seven fifty, was it seven fifty a month?
Seven hundred and fifty dollars.
A month, yeah.
Okay, so I, I, okay, now, knowing that, what are we hoping to get a month? What, is there a end game? Is there a, an estimated amount that we're looking at? Are we looking at three thousand a month?
How many carriers are up there? I don't even know. I don't know if we know how many carriers are up there. I know there was a. Couple of numbers that Matt mentioned about one of the carriers up there paying forty-five thousand in twenty seventeen and seventy-seven thousand in twenty eighteen.
To get on that tower?
Yes.
Wow. Holy man.
So what are, Jessica, do you know what we're getting from that particular tower?
No, I just know the combined is about twenty thousand.
For the Altavertie and for this one?
A year.
And what he said, seven fifty possibly a month.
Yeah, he said a one, but then the other one, so. The other one must generate the balance to get to twenty thousand.
This was just from.
So, I mean, are we trying to get forty thousand a year or? I mean, then, then it all makes sense.
We're trying to get, we're trying to get. We're trying to get a fair percentage of rent for no matter how many carriers are on there.
So we don't, we don't have any idea what, what else they've added on there that we're not paying, that we're not getting anything for that.
Well, and also if they want to add more later, we won't be able to get our share instead of them just giving us a flat fee for one. That, that's, that, that's been the premise of this from the beginning.
Do we know how much Attorney Eadie has into this already? For legal expenses?
Jessica and I, I, we had, we just had an invoice from that in the last. The last set of vouchers.
Is that the eighteen, no, SBA. Um, the last bill was four thousand one, four thousand one eighty-one. That was worked through September twenty-seventh.
To the attorney.
To the attorney. The E T and T lease is severed?
Well, there's questions that come up on these things all the time. They, these companies just seem to be able to. They'll send one representative to contact you about the same tower and then all of a sudden you get a call from some other, or contact from another company on the same tower.
It just feels like it's almost by design that this is done, and I'm sure it's done everywhere. So if it gets to a point where they feel like this is crazy, let's, let's just come in here, dismantle the whole darn thing and move to a different site.
The bill before was thirty-seven hundred, so now we're over four thousand for the SBC.
Well, there's been more, there's been more work on that in the last couple of months to, to get ready for this, you know, the pending.
And this is getting an expert involved with us on our side.
So this would bring an expert to, on our side for the.
Just getting back to the, to the expert, I think they should assign the individual to the project and give us the rate. What's the rate gonna be? Because there is no rate here.
Good point.
There's rates, but it doesn't say who this Ramos or who specifically we're gonna be dealing with, we'll get to that.
Right.
That page.
And also in their agreement and the fine line said the extent of liability is gonna be five hundred thousand dollars. I think the village has a million or two million. Because the way it's written here, the extent is gonna be, they do have a five million dollars liability insurance, but in this case. I believe it's gonna be five hundred thousand.
Have you, I'm sorry, what are you referencing? Their limit of li, limitation of liability?
Consultant liability. Item C. Did our attorney review this con, uh, contract?
Yes, he provided it to us.
Okay. Still, I'd like to see the individual who's. I think the attorney should pick up based on their resume who he wants to help him.
That's how he's. Well, Mr. Ramsos is the person that he is ident, that he's identified as the project manager here.
Okay, what's his rate? Two hundred and fifty-five dollars an hour or what?
Should we defer this to the next meeting? Or is this time?
Project manager is billed one forty to two thirty, okay, it's not specified. All right, I should get clarification on that.
Is this time sensitive?
I think so.
But it's time sensitive for years.
It can wait till the next meeting, I guess, so.
Do we need a move, a, a move to defer or just defer?
We don't, we don't have a motion.
Okay, oh, okay.
We can table to.
Okay.
Defers to the next meeting.
He's tabling all second.
Not table.
Defer. Defer.
Either?
Yeah, table doesn't come back unless you ask for it.
Okay.
So you wanna defer this to the. Which meeting? The next meeting?
If we, if we can get our numbers, can we get our numbers? Well, should we go to the November eighteen?
I mean, the first of, well.
I mean, October twenty eighth is next week.
Next week or the regular meeting will be November fourth, right?
I, I can't imagine that Attorney Eadie would, that would take very long for him to hammer out a person and a rate or find out who that is.
We can find that out tomorrow, I'm sure.
No, it's pretty easy for them to do it, but we should know what we're gonna pay for.
Right.
We're paying four hundred and fifty dollars attorney fee or two hundred dollars attorney fee per hour.
Okay. So my, my motion is to defer this to our October twenty-eighth, uh, board meeting?
November fourth?
Yes, November, sorry, November fourth.
Not October twenty eighth. The same second.
Okay, we have a motion to defer this to November fourth meeting and a second. On the question. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. And you don't, Sherri, make sure that's on the November fourth agenda, please. Uh, item number forty-seven, Weston School Warm House.
This is, uh, my item and I provide you quite a lengthy background on it just because I know some of you probably weren't aware, weren't aware of what has taken place. And I wanted to. Answer as many questions ahead of time as I could, so you understand the process and. Michael got himself involved with it too. And got educated a little bit on how these things happen and how they're monitored through how national. National, um, or federal grants are handled by Wisconsin D N R personnel, so they actually manage the grants for federal government. So this facility, like it stated in there, is built way back in nineteen seventy-nine. The original grant amount for it was just over sixteen. Just, we received just over eight thousand dollars to help construct this facility, which is a fifty-fifty matching grant at that point. Then we also submitted an additional grant request of additional just over six thousand dollars because they overran on construction costs. Paperwork that we can find is a little short. I don't know if we got the extra three thousand dollars we requested, but we did get a little over eight thousand dollars, so. Staff discussed this item and realized that the expense we're putting into getting rid of this facility is more than we ever got to construct the facility, so. It's like. Difficult for us to move forward with something that's costing the village so much, but it's something that, you know. We know we were, had to do something with it. We've talked about it for years since we stopped using the facility. School district, again, has made another request that we remove it. The D N R pretty much can't answer. How we ever, we're able to build that facility on school property either. Um, when, when we asked them, they don't, they have no idea how this ever happened, actually. So basically, we have a building on school property and. To do anything with it, basically, we have to transfer the value that's currently in that facility to another facility that will be open for recreation. So if it's appraised at five thousand dollars, you take five thousand dollars worth of value and you transfer it to basically a deed in another one of our recreation facilities. We're proposing the new canoe and kayak launch on Highway J because we know that, you know, we have the value of the property itself is way exceeds. Anything that, um, warm house would be worth. We did this previously, uh, back when the county purchased right away from us out at Yellow Banks Park. I think I mentioned that in there, we did it twice. And we transferred the value of the second purchase to when we bought the Midtukowski property over at Kennedy Park. When we bought a resident that, the other residential lot that used to be at Kennedy Park. So we took that three thousand dollars we got from the county and put that in that, uh, value of that little section of Kennedy Park. So. Far more than.
Putting that value, putting that value out of J helps us or hurts us?
Um, the only way it would hurt us is if you ever wanted to get rid of that property. And I think with them donating it, I'm sure there's stipulation in there that we can't ever. Get rid of it anyways. But it ties us in perpetuity to keeping that facility open for the, you know, forever. And that's pretty much how it is with all the grants. So we have grant dollars in Mock Mueller, Gilchrist River Trail, Kennedy Park. Weston Warm House, uh, the Baldimons at Kennedy, we have multiple grants at Kennedy alone. So, and right now, they basically do, make us do a. Self-inspection on properties and submit paperwork to them, usually every five years, depending on where the grant fell in the cycle. Um, and then, or they stop in and do a surprise visit, which they did last year, and inspect a couple of our granted projects. So they're basically, they're looking for, make sure we're maintaining them, uh, make sure there's signage. So people know that there's grant dollars, um, in that facility. And then, you know, make sure everything's, um, up to what was done with their funding.
Question being, if for whatever reason we decided to discontinue the kayak park. You know, just say, no, we're not, we could transfer it to another place. So it's not like we put it here and, and we're, you know, there's no way we're gonna ever be able to, for whatever reason, wanna close it. Close it because we could just transfer it just like we did now.
How old is this warming house?
Uh, nineteen seventy-nine, it was constructed.
Constructed? If it would've, if it would've disappeared, who would've known that it's gone?
Uh, the D N R would know because I've completed a self-inspection report on it before.
So because of you. They would've known that, okay. I'm just wondering. I just wanna know who to blame.
Superintendent Gilmore wants it gone.
Kind of a wake-up call for some of these grants, so sometimes the, you know, when you're bound into perpetuity on something. Is it worth eight grand? I, I, you know, when the strings become a little too cumbersome, sometimes it's not worth the funds you're getting.
Yeah, and I think that even if we were not constructing the canoe and kayak launch here, the value can still be in that property, transferred to that property. So as long as that property is still held by the village.
That leads me to a question. And now, now that's still gonna be this, this, these strings and ties to that.
And, and that's, but that.
And then we gotta tell people that it was grant money.
Right.
Put a plaque on.
Right.
I mean, it's just, it's so ridiculous, it's unbelievable.
And this is just a proposal. We don't even know if they'll accept that. It was our proposal.
So my question is, if, if you try to do this diversion process, what was it?
Yes.
Conversion.
Okay, so if you try to do this diversion. Do you have to put, we already budgeted that money from the county, that grant money to work on, you know, putting that lot in and help with, uh, getting the launch. Do we have to put something new or can we incorporate that into what we're already putting in there?
We can actually incorporate it into some of the value of the property and have it recorded on the deed. Doesn't actually have to, we don't actually have to construct the building.
That's what I mean.
It's literally just, it's just the value.
Switch the value over there, don't know.
Right.
Don't have to tell everybody.
You might have to have a plaque because, you know, it's gonna be on the deed, but it, it's really just transferring the value of that. So really, you're putting a small deed restriction on the deed because there's federal grant dollars in it, which basically holds us to. Using it for recreation purposes in perpetuity.
Why is, why does a property have to have the deed on there? I, I don't.
Well, so.
You didn't own the property when you built this warming house and threw it on school property.
Yeah.
So why, why is there, why is it tied into the actual deed on the property then?
Well, I'm saying, that was, that would be one option. If we, if we, if we thought we could get this done, unfortunately, it's a six to twelve month process. In the construction of the facility, it'd say that it valued at five thousand dollars. We could literally say we're gonna spend five thousand dollars in this park on a specific item. They'd have to approve it. So it wouldn't necessarily be tied to the deed of the park, but it'd be tied to that specific item, so. Like that was a warming house, so a specific item that was done with it wasn't per, property. You know, backstops on the baseball fences at Kennedy Park was a specific item, but then there's also property like Mock Mueller. That was purchased with federal grant dollars, so then it's tied directly to the property. This is a, just a proposal. We're proposing, we could do something different, it's just.
I mean, can you make, uh, the school district happy by dismantling it? And then do the paperwork to move it over there? It looks like you're, everything is in order. Or do you actually have to do all the paperwork first and then?
Yeah, we can't do anything until we have, um, something approved.
Wow.
So unless we propose moving the facility. And we're moving a, you know, forty-year-old building that. It would cost more to move than it's worth, probably, so.
I'm almost thinking dismantle it, do the paperwork, and then ask for forgiveness when you get caught. Instead of permission on the.
I guess my question, my question is.
We did ask them if we could just pay that back the grant money that they provided us, and that's not an option.
Okay, so my question is, what, what will qualify for this expense? Do we, it can't be like, well, we paid, we paid part of the parking lot. Does that qualify or do you have to have a, a tangible bench or a tangible something? Tell me what will qualify under this diversion. For, for the, for the.
Sure.
Yeah, so if the.
Without tying a deed on the property, I think that's crazy.
Well, I get, and they're, they just wanna make sure that, you know, they give grant funds to the town of Weston back in the day to make sure that there's. Recreational opportunity for the public, so the warming house, say, has a five thousand dollar value to it. And the kayak launch area has a hundred thousand dollar land value. Five percent of that land value just has to be open for recreational purposes. So it's, you know, they, you put, they put a map together and say, yeah, there's five thousand dollars of this land is for. So if we just took some of the river frontage and said this river frontage is, uh, the public access to the river. And it's valued at, you know, five thousand dollars or twenty thousand dollars and that's where that value is going. I guess that would be our exchange with them is saying we're taking away the skating facility, but we're moving it to public access of the river.
But you said that they actually physically have to inspect this. What are they inspecting?
A lot of times they just come in.
Here, this section, this ten-foot section of grass, but.
Just that the property is open.
Yeah, like I said, some, some they do inspect, some they don't, like, um, when we did the Kennedy Park conversion with the Yellow Banks property. For the Midtukowski property, as far as I know, they've never inspected it and I have not had to do a.
But they could, they could.
They could. But they, but when we did that one, they didn't require, didn't provide a signage for that. But when we did Mock Mueller, yes, when she inspected it last year, yes, you, and we have signage out there, but she's like, make sure these signs are. You know, nice and forward so everybody can see them, so. And that was just for the purchase of part of the property when we did Mock Mueller.
This is happening all over.
Well, I, I find this ridiculous for a five thousand dollar building.
Actually, what we're talking about is.
Twenty years from now, thirty years from now, somebody's gonna be dealing with the same thing, saying, what did we, what do we have here and what are we supposed to do with it? Cause now we gotta move it. I, it just.
And I think that's where, you know, I mean, we can take a closer look at the agreement that was signed with. For that property that was donated to us, but I'm pretty sure we're gonna be tied to that property in perpetuity anyways because it was donated to the village.
For.
For, for purposes. By the, um. I'm gonna draw a blank.
Will family.
What's that? The Will family, yeah.
Yeah, Darryl Will.
Well, I, 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 I just, it's just.
I understand.
It bothers me with, when we, everyone wants to jump, oh, it's free money, it's free money. Well, first of all, nothing's free because it's all come through taxpayer dollars at some point. But when the strings become that enhanced, that entangled, and for this length of time in perpetuity, make sure, make sure we know what all the, what all the, all the dirty details in those contracts are, because if you had to redo over, it wouldn't have been worth that warming house.
And the thing is, they, they changed the rules for this process. So when we did our initial conversion, it was county paid us this amount of dollars that for right-of-way out at Yellow Banks, invest this money into that park, you're done. That was, that was the conversion. So we put a new roof on the shelter, a new roof on the bathroom. Sounds like a pretty easy process. Now they've taken that process and taken it to the extreme to do this conversion. So that, the last one was done by the county because they were pursuing the right-of-way. The one we did previously, like I said, it was an easy one, and now this, the third one that we're proposing, but we haven't done one since county X is constructed, so it's been quite a few years. And by the looks of it, they update forms every two to three years and change the process at this point. So the regulations.
Just before, Warren, would you come in with grant proposals again? We're going to go through that with the flag. All right. Anybody care to make a motion on this?
I, I move to approve the, moving the Weston School warming house value to the proposed kayak launch on the day.
It's really, it's really just if you want us to start the conversion process on it. I mean, as I've stated in there, there's basically three options is what they give you. We investigate the other options. The school district, we know wants to get rid, wants us to move it. They don't want to take it. We looked at alternative uses when we originally were looking at no longer using it as a, as a ice skating facility. We thought possibly, you know, if one of the youth groups that was out there that didn't have a home would want to take it over, you know, but none of these groups have anything. They don't have any funds. They, we still intend to maintain it, we still intend to maintain this facility regardless if we switch the use. So say a soccer group wanted to use it, or Eiffel, or anything, any of those.
So shifting it to yellow, or to the kayak, in essence, we're going to get rid of it. It's going to be gone, torn down.
Right, right. We're still going to have to tear it down.
Could we not mistakenly have Matt burn it on a Saturday morning? And then, now that's a training exercise, I mean, we, we could put a value of thirty thousand dollars in training there. I, I'm being extremely sarcastic, but I don't know if, I don't know if I want my name attached to this in any way, shape, or form. This is absolutely scary.
And my concern is, we got eight thousand originally?
Yeah.
We're paying ten thousand dollars for a conversion process to MSA, so we're paying an outside consultant to do this plus appraisal cost. So we're losing money on this and jumping through unbelievable hoops that we shouldn't have to jump through. This is, it's insane.
Yeah, and we, we talked about, we struggled with this whole process. That's why we're like, well, if we could just pay them back the eighty-three hundred dollars that we originally got from them.
But we can't.
We can't.
We can't. Can't the school? If she wants to go on, I mean, tell them to just take out. I don't know. They, and their response was not favorable. Yeah. I, I don't mean that in any disrespect to the school. Love the school. Love our superintendent.
Well, we have two issues tonight. We're dealing with the DNR. None of them worked out well.
That's true.
Wow.
I guess the one good thing is, is if the property has a fair market value of under twenty-five thousand, we can do, we don't have to do a full appraisal. It can just be like a assessor's.
A G property?
Yeah.
Warm health. And I mentioned that in my background too, that we could probably have our assessor do the appraisal.
Okay, but can, can you explain to me why we have to pay ten thousand dollars for an outside consultant to do this? Is it just me, or is that?
Do we have to do that? Is that?
That's what's in there. That's, that's a fiscal impact.
That's, that's the budget number that they gave us. It's not an actual contract, MSA. That's the budget number they gave us. It was ten thousand. It's listed in the email. It's not an actual contract.
Something we were going to be.
Cost. I mean, there's, there's a lot of information. I mean, initially, when I contacted them, it was really just to get a number of these things. And I guess, you know, I'm okay with however we want to do it. I was just, we know there's a lot of work there. It's not something we typically do. Actually, Sean Spronberg, there's not, there's not necessarily a timeline, just the request by the school to get it out of there whenever we can, but we know, like I said, this is a six-to-12-month process based on what?
I don't know. It's something, apparently, it's not being used anymore either. So, you know, it needs to get taken care of, I guess. We can see if there's other options. I think Sean has been checking into those. I, I don't like it any better. I mean, yeah, it's, it's something that we, that, a gift that keeps on giving, right?
Gift that keeps on taking. Yeah, I mean, and there's, I mean, we could look at more, look through the detail a little bit more, and if there's some items in there that we can do on our own, some of the mapping stuff we talked about, I know Nate mentioned that we could probably do the, some of the mapping on our own. How much cost is that saving us in that whole process, though? You know?
This is going to happen again, right, in our village?
It better not happen again.
No, it probably will. We've got grants out there of this kind of nature, and things are going to.
Say, if, say we want to get rid of part of Mock Mueller Park, or say the village wanted to buy some right-of-way in there, we would have to do something again.
That's what I mean.
Exactly.
So I think, I think we should either educate ourselves, take, take as long as you want to do it, or absolutely flat-out ignore it. And I, I'm not kidding, because you know what? We got a whole bunch of stuff that's a lot bigger and, and more paramount to getting done than this. And, and no disrespect to the school, I, it's an eyesore. I'm sure they want it gone, but I, I almost would want to show them the paperwork and say, what do you want us to do? This is crazy, you know? Wow. I mean, couldn't, well, I almost want to get like Jerry Petruski or somebody in here to, I probably couldn't do nothing, but.
We, I mean, we understand. We're frustrated with this whole process too, and we're like, what do we do? We don't, we don't understand that this should cost this, this much to get rid of this piece of property, literally.
That's why we want to just pay back the grant.
And it's not a piece of property, it's the building.
It's the building.
The actual building.
Yeah.
That in nineteen seventy-nine was, what, eight grand?
Yeah, that was fifty-fifty matching.
And it doesn't stop. It's into perpetuity.
Yes.
It's just insane. All right, we have a motion. Does anybody want to second this at all? Is there a second? That's our third time. Is there a second? There's no second, the motion dies. I guess staff can continue to research on how to rectify this, but we have no motion from the board right now. All right, item number forty-eight, move to acknowledge the point of Linda Hackarth, or look for approval from the board appointment of Linda Hackarth to the Human Resources Committee.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Maloney, second by Feeny. On the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Repose?
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number forty-nine, convene in a closed session for Wisconsin statutes, section nineteen point eight-five, parent one, parent E, deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing in public funds, or conducting other specific public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, to wit discuss purchasing additional property for new municipal facilities. Move to a closed session.
Second.
Motion by Zagani, second by Maloney. Roll call, please.
We need a roll call.
I don't have enough for everybody. Fermine? Yes.
Do we need them all, or?
Segler? Yes.
Maloney?
Yes.
Feeny?
Aye.
And Jean is absent.
I just got the little bit of information here. Summarized.
Yeah, we're in a closed session, so.